All right, good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock. We will call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Welcome to the Rockwood Board of Education meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district, hear reports about our progress, and listen to the community on important issues. We want to remind all of our visitors that we expect the audience to remain civil and respectful at all times as the board conducts its business. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting. Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, could I have a motion to approve Board of Education meeting minutes for September 21st, 2023? Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. And next one, could I have a motion to approve Board of Education Tax Rate Levy Hearing Meeting Minutes for September 28th, 2023?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion about those minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes. We do not have any patron comments this evening, and so we will move into Superintendent and Board comments, Dr. Kane.
Thank you, President Baze. The Rockwood School District is the number five school district in the state of Missouri, according to niche.com's 24 rankings. Neech is a website that helps families discover schools and neighborhoods. Based on its rankings, it factors a number of indicators, including academics, teachers, culture, diversity, parent and student surveys, health, safety, resources, and facilities, as well as clubs, activities, and sports. As a district, the Rockwood School District received an A+ from the site and ranked in the top 2% of the 451 districts surveyed in the state and in the top 3% of Neech's national rankings, which polled nearly 11,000 school districts nationwide. Congratulations to all the students, families, and staff members who continue to make the Rockwood School District an outstanding educational community. Actually, I think we deserve a round of applause for that. Two Rockwood coaches, Zach Young, who's a Lafayette High School girls volleyball coach and a physical education teacher at Wildwood Middle, and Marquette High School's boys tennis coach and social studies teacher, Alex Nelly. They were both recently selected as the 2022-23 MESHA NFHS Coaches of the Year. The Lancers Girls Volleyball Team is the defending Class V State Champion and is currently ranked number 23 in the nation, according to USA Today American Volleyball Coaches Association rankings. The Mustangs Boys Tennis Team placed third in state last year and one of its players finished second in the state's single tournament, the best finish in the program's history. Both coaches are now eligible for selection as the section and national coach of the year in their respective sports. Congratulations to both Zach and to Alex, and we will absolutely be rooting you on in your section and national coach of the year rounds. The Rockwood School District is excited to be a member of the Mosaic Ambassador's School Program. This program encourages member schools and districts to reinforce an internationally welcoming and inclusive culture throughout the school and pledges unique programming to each of the schools. One of our events for international families took place last week, an ESOL family picnic that brought together educators, students, and families from Baldwin, Westridge, and Werther Elementary Schools for a night of food, fun, and community. We are proud to provide a welcoming educational community for students whose families hail from more than 50 countries and speak more than 40 different primary languages, as well as a diverse array of staff members as well. On Tuesday night, we held our first, the first of our four informational town halls about Proposition 3, which is a zero tax rate increase levy on the November 7th ballot. This occurred at Marquette High School. It was a great opportunity to meet with the community, specific community members, and to present information about the needs that are listed with Proposition 3. Again, those are to address annual safety, technology, and facility needs across the Rockwood School District. The other three town halls will be held at Rockwood Summit that will be on October 10th, at Lafayette High School that will be on October 17th, and then at Eureka High School, which will be on October 24th. Each of these town hall meetings will be at 6:00 p.m. Just a reminder, you can submit a question about Prop 3 to propthreequestions@rsdmo.org, and it may be chosen to be addressed publicly at one of our town hall meetings. All questions will receive an email response. And finally, on Monday, the Rockwood School District and schools all across our district celebrated National Custodian Appreciation Day. This is a time to show appreciation for our hardworking and truly diligent custodians who keep our spaces and workplaces clean and safe. Given the number of openings that we are currently having in the custodial department, all of our staff members are covering a great deal of square footage, and they are doing their level best to do an absolutely outstanding job. I want to thank all of our custodians for their hard work, all of their work and efforts that they engage in on a daily basis to support a positive educational environment here in the Rockwood School District. Let's give our folks a round of applause. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Any Board comments? I was going to start with one this evening. I don't know if we have a picture that we can pull up here, but there it is. Last night, some of us had the opportunity to attend the Region 7 meeting for MSBA that was hosted by Ladue High School. And so that is an opportunity to reconnect with school boards that participate in Region 7, and that is most of St. Louis County. And throughout the night, at the end of the night, we played a game, a board governance trivia game. We had Dr. Dave Cobb sitting in with us. Legendary evening of trivia and question and answer by this board. You'll be proud to know that we teamed up with the Afton School District at our table to form a team named Affwood, and our team won. We had 100% of the questions answered correctly about board governance. And so our prize at the end of the night, in addition to this wonderful photo together with Terrence Peterson, who leads MSBA, was that we all received a big pile of MSBA bucks. And so those can be used at future conferences, trainings, registrations. And we talked last evening about we oftentimes will have them come in and facilitate our work sessions that we do that are the more extended version. And so we would like to put these bucks towards one of those future work sessions in order to continue the growth of this board. So it was a fun evening. Izzy was there as well, and so we appreciate the time that people took here to represent all seven of us. And so it was a great night collaborating with other boards. So just wanted to give a little shout out and a pat on our own backs for that.
Can I make a comment from that evening? Dr. Whipke, some of you may recognize that name. He had his humble beginnings in Rockwood School District. He's also the superintendent of Ladue. And in his speech, their school district had a horrible tragedy at the beginning of the year, and he mentioned the staff and families of Marquette High School lifting them up through that tragedy. And I just thought it just showed so much about the caring hearts of the people in our community and our school district. So I wanted to share that he shared that with all of the school boards that were present.
Other Board comments?
I'd just like to piggyback on Dr. Kane's comments on the Prop 3 meetings and give just a little thanks to both Dr. Kane, the Communications Department, and the Finance Department for the outstanding work they're doing in putting the materials together for Prop 3, answering the questions, getting all the turnaround done. I know it's a lot of extra work, and I just want to say thank you to all of you for the work your teams are doing for it.
All right. Then we will move on to consent agenda items this evening. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted? Motion and a second, any discussion?
I had a question on one of the consent agenda items. On Item 833 for Zero Hour Assignments, one of the assignments was for Rockwood Summit High School for ACT Prep. I was wondering if we do ACT Prep at zero hour at the other high schools? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So the high school zero hours, Gary Janting oversees the high school's division of those. So they are mainly related to lab work. So if you have a science class that requires a lab, there is a zero hour, but there is some discretionary zero hours. So schools can make some choices. There is ACT Prep at the high schools. It just looks different at, for instance, my child goes to Eureka High School. It looks different at Eureka than it does at Summit, than it does at Lafayette.
Thank you.
I just, I can, so Marquette, they don't call it ACT Prep, but we do give a stipend for a teacher to ACT Prep, PSAT Prep. But she offers courses at Marquette.
Standing, thank you.
Any other discussion on consent agenda items? Director Rumber, do you want to read the, thanks?
I want to publicly thank Bowles PTO for their donation of $2,986.53 for the Bowles community for their field trip. So thank you to the community for supporting us again.
Okay, so that motion is to approve the consent agenda items as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
I have to abstain from Item 8.10 on the consent agenda, please.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have a few proclamations and an update from transportation this evening. So first up is the National School Lunch Week proclamation. Could I please have a motion to approve the proclamation designating October 9th through 13th, 2023 as National School Lunch Week?
Second.
Motion and a second, and Carmen Fisher, welcome.
Thank you very much. Rockwood will celebrate National School Lunch Week from October 9th through the 13th. The Fun and Creative Campaign theme, Level Up With School Lunch, highlights the importance of the healthy school lunch to the student's success, both in and out of the classroom. Research shows children are getting their healthiest meals at school. National School Lunch Week will highlight the nutritious foods available daily at Rockwood. School lunches offer students fruits, vegetables, whole grains, milk, and meat. Federal nutrition standards limiting fat, calories, and sodium. We offer fresh fruits, fresh frozen canned, dried fruits, and vegetables. And occasionally, we add a few sprinkles and chocolate chips and whipped topping on top to make it a little bit of fun. National School Lunch Week helps us educate parents and students about all the wonderful benefits of our lunch program. Our child nutrition staff are doing a great job feeding our kids as we continue to be short-staffed. Rockwood Child Nutrition has served so far this year over 33,000 breakfasts and over 224,000 lunches so far. Daily, that's about 1,000 breakfasts and 7,000 lunches. The federally funded National School Lunch Program will be fueling, has been fueling students for success for 77 years now. Some students may qualify for free and reduced-priced meals, and the application for those free and reduced-priced meals can be found on our website. The child nutrition staff are working extra hard to serve the meals, as I said mentioned before, because we are short-staffed, about 50 workers. And, but we do have students helping us in some of the schools. We have high school students at Eureka, Marquette, Summit, and Lafayette. So we're excited to have them helping us in the kitchen, so.
Thank you. Would you like us to read the proclamation now?
Yeah, that would be great.
Director Emming's going to read that for us?
National School Lunch Week Official Proclamation. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for 77 years through advanced practices and nutrition education. And whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and academic achievement of our nation's children. And whereas recent research shows students are receiving their healthiest meals at school. And there is evidence of the continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. I'm sorry, I can't even see this. Now therefore, we, the Board of Education of the Rockwood School District, do hereby proclaim the week of October 9th through the 13th, 2023, as National School Lunch Week. And I encourage all residents to become aware of the benefits of the National School Lunch Program and support good nutrition habits for their children in the hope of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so that motion is to approve the proclamation designating October 9th through 13th, 2023 as National School Lunch Week. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, Carmen. Thank you, a big thank you to your department for the extra effort that everyone is giving to this current circumstances and feeding all of those children. I always love those statistics. Okay, now, we would like to welcome Dr. Cassandra Suggs up. We have a National Anti-Bullying Month proclamation. Could I have a motion to approve that the Board of Education proclaim the month of October 2023 as Anti-Bullying Month in the Rockwood School District? Motion and a second. Oh, we have two, yes. All right, Dr. Steve Ankins. All right, welcome.
Welcome, thank you for having us. Would you like to read the proclamation first? Or you would like us to speak first?
Either way, what do you prefer?
Why don't you read it first, and then we'll tell you a little bit about it.
Okay, Director Rumber.
Anti-Bullying Proclamation. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology, such as the internet and cell phones. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas thousands of children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now therefore, be it resolved, we, the Rockwood School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Bullying Prevention Month.
Thank you so much. We are very excited to introduce our anti-bullying initiative as really a reboot, because we had this program in the Rockwood School District before. And now we're coming back, and we're going to be rebooting it for the secondary level, working with middle schoolers, get some insight from high schoolers, having some time away to train them, and then come back and apply that to the schools themselves. So that we're allowing the students to be the spokespeople against bullying. Therefore, we will not hopefully have many more bystanders, but we'll have people who are active. And at the elementary level, I'm very excited to say that my department this year new has created a character puppet show that will be going to all 19 elementary. We already have our signup sheet, and it's filling up fast. That came from conversations this summer with our principals, our one-on-one conversations, where they said they found a lot of peer-on-peer conflict, disrespect, mean words, which we know could lead to bullying. So who doesn't love puppets? So I figured I'd dust off my 12-year-old puppet learning arm when I was at Bellevue Baptist Church and throw it into action again. So we're excited about the opportunity to take that to the schools. We're going to ask students to participate, as well as principals. And we're really excited to bring it to a level to hopefully we can train them early so when they get to middle school and high school, we find less and less of bullying as a problem. We're also going to tie it into our dignity and belonging, which is an opportunity our whole district and community will get a chance to be a part of. And so the anti-bullying initiative will be right in line with our dignity and belonging so that all of our students feel like they have a safe and loving place to go every day. Isn't that something that we all want? Thank you, Board.
I just wanted to mention, while you're up here, Cassandra, Dr. Suggs is doing an amazing job just tying everything together. Our initiative with dignity and belonging really ties into the fact that everyone should be treated with dignity. And this also, unfortunately, bullying, and then what we talked about last month with suicide prevention, goes hand-in-hand. And one of the biggest things we can do from the adult standpoint is to get to know our kids, create that trust. So when they are having trouble, they can come talk to us. We have amazing teachers, amazing custodians, cafeteria workers, counselors, bus drivers. We have so many wonderful adults in the building. So we hope that we just continue to foster those relationships, and Dr. Suggs continues doing her work. She's doing an amazing job.
I have a question. Will the training that you're going to do for the reboot be similar or the same as was done before with the program?
There will be some similarities. We worked with Donette Whisker, Dr. Whisker, in that program, and with Matt Berry.
Yeah.
And so, yes, there will be some similarities. Were you familiar with it?
Yes, in fact, I'm really bummed because I always wear my T-shirt on this night.
Oh.
And I forgot. But yes, I got to participate years ago at one of the, actually, a couple of them. And they're fantastic. And hearing the kids, that was the best part, was being able to see the kids experience it, obviously, but then take that back into their buildings. And I know that those kids, they're maybe sixth graders, I think, that I'm thinking of, that I was with, are seniors in high school this year. So, yeah, it's been a bit that I was there. But it was an amazing program. So I'm really glad to hear that it's coming back, and I love the model, and it's exciting. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, we're excited as well.
Yeah.
Question, how do we gauge the level of bullying? Or, you know, what each school is dealing with to be able to say, okay, this is what this school needs? Or how do we approach it differently? Is there something that we look at? Is it the surveys that we really are able to say, you know, this area is having a bigger problem?
It's a great question. Yes, we do use, we have a fantastic data and research department, as you know. We use our SEL surveys for that. And then our one-on-one meetings this summer was an opportunity for us to dig deeper into that. And that's where the puppet shows came out of. So that we do, we're not just going to a school and arbitrarily talking about anything. We are specifically focusing on an area in their school that has been indicated as a place where we need to strengthen relationships and build up some capacity for some love and empathy for one another. So that's a great question. So, yes, we're using the data, and then we're trying to focus in on those areas.
I'm assuming you're looking at referrals to offices and looking at that data, and we'll look at where we are now over time?
Always. Always. If I could just put a small plug in, I just have to say it. So when I went to Wildwood, it was pre-pandemic. We had, you know, over 700 referrals. And that was something that I focused on changing. When I left, two years later, it was 145. But that was also connecting with teachers so that they can have a comfort level, as Steve said, build those relationships. Because what, at the end of the year, no teacher ran up to us and said, man, we wish we had more referrals. So absolutely, we are looking at that data. I love looking at the data, and it's very helpful. And it's an opportunity for us to say factually, this is what's going on. How can we improve it? Or how can we keep sustaining what we're doing? Great question. Sorry I had to get that plug in, it was just important.
You know, it might be helpful. I appreciate your comments about data that maybe over time in the future, as this program gets launched, we can, as the Board, get some of those statistics. How well is it working? You know, even just the statistic you mentioned on Wildwood, while not surprising to me at all, that's very good information for us to know. Yes, we're making progress. Are we making progress in law schools? Just some schools. Where are our opportunities? Because that's essentially what we may have to do as a Board is reallocate money if the curve is going the wrong way or if we have specific problems. And that data would help us in the future, you know, make those calls and decisions.
I appreciate your commitment to that. And we're definitely putting in the work to make sure that we get those date numbers going down and evening out. Thank you for that. Anybody else? Well, we hope you'll come out and see some of our trainings when we do get those kicked off. It'll be at the beginning of the year. We'll definitely do that, thank you. Thank you. Steve's doing a great job as well.
I think he looks like a great puppeteer.
Oh, my gosh.
And I do have a question. What do you do for the high schoolers? Are you using that too?
So the secondary, no, no. Well, you know, you never know. We can probably get some volunteers for that one. But we're going in, we're working in small groups with the high schoolers and getting some student leaders from that to go out and push out our anti-bullying initiative.
Okay.
But, yes, at the elementary level. But hey, if you want to come help us, just remember, you've got to do this, not this. This is a duck, just the bottom. Work on your finger or thumb, and we'll bring you onboard.
Sounds good.
No pun intended.
That's funny, yeah. Boom, boom.
No one asked about the puppets. The puppets are multi-puppets as well.
Well, what are they?
Multi-colors, multi-abilities. We have some in wheelchairs. We have all variety of puppets. Thank you, Steve, for the finance for that. So, yeah, you have to see it. It's going to be beautiful. We have, we tried to represent every puppet, every person through a puppet that we could think of.
I would love to see it, so send us an invite.
Okay.
I'd love to come.
I'll do it. I'll send you several dates to choose from.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that motion is to approve that the Board of Education proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-three is anti-bullying month in the Rockwood School District. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And next up, we have a transportation update, inform, excuse me, information only coming from Mike Hayman. Welcome. I know. Yes.
Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate it. And, uh, Dr. Kane, thank you very much. Um, on the photos, I want to point out before we go to first slide, in the middle, you're gonna see a photo of our new renovated transportation office that's still under construction. Um, we're looking at, uh, October twenty-third, the week of October twenty-third about taking full occupancy. So we're all excited about that. It's been, uh, it's been a work in progress and it really looks nice. I would love to see yous come out and, and take it in. It's, it's, it's really nice. It's really nice. I appreciate it. Uh, the transportation department, uh, do I get the slide thing? Is this me? Did I go the wrong way? Here we go, okay. Our successes in the transportation department, um, we are, uh, Fleet Excellence Award has been awarded to the transportation department. And I made a mistake. It's seven years in a row. It's wishful thinking for me and, and, and the confidence that it will be eight years. Uh, but eight years in a row, what does that mean? That's a score of ninety percent or better of passing, first time passing for all your inspections. I will say this, that as a district, we've averaged over ninety-eight percent effective, which is over ten percent above the state's average on inspections. Uh, the overall service to the district, or our success was there. Our maintenance performed, uh, in-house, uh, on two hundred and forty-seven vehicles, that entire, the entire bus fleet, early childhood fleet, maintenance fleet, grounds and buildings, warehouse. Um, and we haven't seen many of them lately, but the drivers had cars as well. Um, we have a maintenance department of four mechanics and one shop manager that do a fantastic job staying up with everything. We have one hundred and three great bus drivers currently, twenty-nine of which have served Rockwood from sixteen to forty-six years. So we have some very dedicated bus drivers in our, in our, in our, um, service. With seven coaches that we've recently trained and to drive the athletic trips to help us out with the activities. The new renovations and expansion at the Wildwood, Wildwood Bus Facility is due to be completed, like I said earlier, on October twenty-third. Plans are underway for renovation of the Fenton Bus Lot to include a paved lot, which currently has been gravel, and a modular building, not a trailer. And we'll be beginning this in the summer of twenty twenty-four. Thank you. Times are changing. Yeah, they are. I put up a graph to kind of give everyone an idea on what the transportation department has been dealing with when it comes to staffing shortages and, and how it, how it relates to the number of routes we run. Back in twenty nineteen, we had, these are regular home-to-school drivers, bus drivers. We had a hundred and sixty-one drivers. We ran one hundred and forty-seven routes. In twenty twenty, um, we had to drop to a hundred and thirty because we were losing bus drivers with the pandemic. And we cut down to a hundred and twenty-four routes. We tried to stay ahead of the curve the entire time, keeping the district and the parents informed as to what was going on. Um, twenty twenty-two, or twenty-one, we, we lost more drivers. We had one hundred and ten drivers and we had to reduce our routes to one hundred and six. Twenty twenty-two, we lost some more drivers. We reduced the routes down to ninety-eight. In twenty twenty-three, this current year, you can see we are scratch on drivers. We have ninety-seven routes. We have ninety-seven home-to-school drivers, regular ed. I will tell you this, that every day we start the day with twelve open routes. I have medical leave and I have only three subs. So we only, we, we cover that. We're covering that in our department. Hats off to the staff that I have for making this happen. All the routes are being ran. They're all being performed and hat, this total hats off to them. Next slide. We're changing with the times. Give you some, some numbers, some transported students and ridership. In twenty nineteen, we transported thirteen thousand four hundred and nineteen students with the one hundred and forty-seven routes. Now, keep in mind, as you see these numbers fade, things have to change with how you make your routes. And, and, and habits have to change. Old, old things you can't do. You can't pick up kids at every corner. You have to space your stops out so you can get more kids and travel more distances to pick those kids up with less buses. So we did that with a hundred and forty-seven routes. In twenty twenty, we transported, this is the COVID, seventy-four hundred and forty students with one hundred and twenty-four routes. What was, what was strange there is if you remember, we started off with first through third and we kind of gradually brought the, brought the kiddos back. Um, I started that year with a full staffing of drivers, but second week into transporting, I started losing more and more and more. And before I knew it, by the time we started bringing the high schoolers back, we had twenty-five less drivers. So within several weeks, we lost that many drivers. In twenty twenty-one, we transported ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-five students with one hundred and six routes. Now, all these numbers that I'm telling you with the student counts are based on actual state counts that were performed in, uh, the spring of those years. Our fall count is going to be performed next, next week for the state counts. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, we transported ten thousand three hundred and seventeen students with ninety-eight routes. Take notice of the number of routes and the number of kids moved. Currently, we haven't done our state count this year, but since the pandemic, it was necessary to start having kids register for buses. I had to know exactly how many kids I had on buses to make sure I didn't overcrowd them, A, and, and B, to make sure I, I was running enough to, to service the community. We went to registering and currently I have eleven thousand three hundred and forty-four students registered to ride buses. Now, I won't know if they're all, all of them are riding and our, our counts are done. But we are probably one of the most utilized and efficient public school district transportations. Um, we're, we're, I'm amazed, quite frankly. Um, the next, the next page, our challenges. Continue with the national, uh, nationwide driver shortage. We're no exception to that. We are absolutely no exception. We, we've got an aggressive recruitment campaign going. We advertise in local, uh, papers. We are, we offer incentives for hiring bonuses, uh, referral bonuses to our employees. And, uh, I carry a stack of cards and I see people walking on the sidewalks and I think that could, I pull my car over and I offer them and try to talk them into being a bus driver. Uh, it, it is, is that much. And I will say this, that I think through some focus groups that we may be looking at, get some drivers to start volunteering. I think get some of their buy-in more on, on, you know, they know what it takes to get the job done and hopefully, uh, that will help us as well. This impacts the ability to add and maintain district, district bus routes without saying. You don't have drivers, you can't put the routes on. Ability to meet extracurricular after-school activities. Our priority is home-to-school. We have to get the kiddos home and we have to get them to school, right? Um, and unfortunately, that can affect the, the athletics. Uh, we don't want that to happen. We, we're doing everything we can to make it happen, very, very creative. Our near-capacity buses present student management issues for drivers. Back when we had a hundred and forty-seven routes and we were transporting thirteen thousand four hundred kiddos, we maybe averaged forty kids on a bus. That was a heavy bus. Well, some of our buses are into the fifty-five to sixty range and some of the elementaries are, are your upper sixties. We have seventy-seven passenger buses. I wanted to give you an illustration by letting you know what is a capacity or near-capacity. I run primarily seventy-seven passenger buses. With an elementary aged child, you know, in the size of the kiddos, it's, you can safely transport and no problem. They fit in the seat, no problem with seventy-seven passenger bus, seventy-seven kiddos. Uh, a middle school students, our preferred is like fifty-nine students on that bus. That doesn't make them so crowded, you know, where they're comfortable enough. And the high school is fifty-two passengers. We try to adhere to those. Um, we're not one hundred percent effective at that, but we do try to adhere to that. Uh, we will never send a bus out that is, is, is over capacity, ever. Congested school lots at dismissal time goes without saying. If I'm transporting less kiddos, more parents are driving their kids to schools and they're causing traffic issues. I can't get buses onto lots because of the parent traffic in a lot of our schools. And, and that causes, you know, obviously kids getting home late from school and things of that nature. But those are some of the challenges that we face currently. Our, uh, for fiscal year twenty-four, our outlook and beyond is we, we look to continue our bus refresh. We currently have one, our fifty-seven air-conditioned buses in our regular home-to-school fleet. We have plans to convert the rest of our regular educated buses to, uh, air conditioning over the next several years. This is contingent upon the passing of Prop Three. So hopefully that gets going and I gotta praise everything that's going on as far as the, as the banners on the bus. I love it. Uh, the talk is, is very good. I'm hearing some good things. GPS upgrades, just to give you an update, our, our system is totally in place. Our dash cams are totally in place, which are an excellent, uh, teaching tool for our drivers. We can actually see what the driver's doing and see where the driver's going at the very same time. So if something does happen, event happens, we can bring the driver in and they can see what they were doing while it was happening in front of them to hopefully try to teach them some preventative actions that they could do to thwart off any, 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 any accidents. Um, also, we're looking to, we're gonna start rolling out our parent app. Here comes the bus. It'll be a slow rollout. We'll be introducing it, uh, a few schools at a time, just to make sure it flies good. We did do a test with it and we had some kinks, but we've got those worked out. Before we go, oh, okay. This is, um, this is our transportation team. This is my entire staff of, of, of office staff, dispatchers, routers, uh, managers and safety, safety supervisors. This is a, a photo that was taken after our kickoff meeting. Every year we have the kickoff meeting and we have, we have, we do have a serious photo that we take too. But this was, uh, let's have fun with it. Um, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Yeah?
Got one if I could. Uh, first off, I just, just want to say I like the idea that here comes the bus app because both my kids miss the bus Monday. Uh, but that's my problem, not yours. As, as you're doing recruiting, uh, I understand, you know, there's the national trend on this, but what is it? Do you get any feedback on why people don't want the job? Is it the salary? Is it the conditions? Is it, any one thing you can point to, uh, as you've gotten feedback?
I think the number one thing that the, um, I, I've had seven applicants of the last ten that said if you had benefits. If you had benefits, we'd come. I, I think, I think, I think that the, the applicants we need to attract now are not the semi-retired person. It's gonna be the person that's younger and that person is looking for more than a supplemental income. They're looking for, uh, pretty much a career. Our top scale's twenty-eight ninety-one currently. Uh, it's, it's, it's a great wage, um, and, but they're looking for the benefits. I've lost, um, honestly, I've lost drivers to Parkway and Fox and they don't make as much money, but they have the benefits. That's the number one thing that I see right now.
I just wonder if we can teach any bus drivers to be H V H C.
Very good question.
Support, um, when you say the capacity of the buses are getting fuller and fuller, um, it's the end of the day. Um, we all have kids and no kids. They can get a little crazy on the buses. So what support, um, are the bus drivers feeling supported by their homeschools with behavior, protocols, what have you? Because I know that that could, you know, be a deterrent, um, for people working for a school district for twenty-nine years.
Absolutely. But, um, I will say this, that our schools support our drivers very well, very well. Uh, I'm in communication with them, all my managers are. Uh, we have a system down. We, we communicate with, with conduct reports and then we communicate verbally as, as far as what we're looking for. Um, uh, and you're absolutely right. The more crowded the buses, more things happen. You know, and my grandma used to say nothing happens good after twelve. Nothing happens good in the back of a bus. So it's, it's just a well fact, but it, it's fun. It's, and the schools do really good with us. They work very well.
Can we do to attract more drivers? I, I know you're going around and asking people and trust me, I'm doing the same thing. I think we're all doing the same thing everywhere. Every meeting we have, you know, with the chamber, whatever, we ask people, hey, who do you know? What else can we do to help with that?
I, I have, I have, um, I've sent literature out to all the, the, the pay, parents of the district several, several times and that's, how many thousands of people is that? And it's not, not done anything. Um, word of mouth, I've tried to talk it up. We, we offer every, uh, staff employee in the district a referral, if they refer a driver, a stipend for that. I, I, I really don't know. We, we haven't had a whole lot of success at job fairs. You know, we've hired one, one employee at a job fair, in all the job fairs I've been to. There's been one and she was a mom that kiddos are out of school now down in Marisol in, in Eureka. But, uh, I, I, I don't know. It's, I'm baffled. Quite frankly, I'm baffled and many people are in the industry that we try, we're trying all kinds of things. And it's, I'm, I'm hoping that the new facilities, I'm touting the new facilities are, are gonna be something to attract them as well. Our average age of our fleet is, is, is three, less than, less than four years old, the average age, and that, that's great. We have excellent buses and that's usually something that brings them in. We have more air-conditioning buses than most, most districts all around.
Along those lines, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the state, I thought I saw this in a note, uh, earlier this week or last week. Isn't the state requirement that we, we have to bus three miles out and we actually bus one mile out? Is that correct?
Um, right, we, we're required to, to bus all students with three and a half miles of, of, of the school. And it's not as a bird flies or a crow flies, you know, it's, it's the, right, the navigated streets. And, um, we are approximate to a mile. Approximately to a mile. It could be a mile, one point two, could be eight tenths.
But, you know, not, not to add more homework to anybody, but I guess I am. Do we as a board need to talk about what's the cost of a hundred people benefits? Uh, when we look at next year's budget? You know, how big of an issue is that? And how big of a cost is that? Could you research? Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that would be, you know, one of the things we have to address, I think, as a board is, you know, if, if we, if we collectively agree that that would be an incentive, then, you know, what's our pressure here, uh, for these jobs and what's the cost then to, to make them more attractive? Uh, and what's the trade-off? And I know there's always a trade-off between salary and benefits, you know. Uh, had that discussion actually at the house the other day. And so, you know, it happens all the time, not just for this job, for any of our jobs.
Yeah, so there is a nationwide shortage. This is everywhere. It's, it's not as simple as just adding benefits, I don't think. And, and that was actually discussed, uh, in the last contract negotiation, whether or not we would add benefits at that time. And there were several reasons that it was decided not to. Um, in, in fact, it, it's not really unanimous that they want benefits. So it's, it's a very complicated situation. We are taking a look at things. We are taking a look at, um, maybe, uh, a few slogans or, I don't want to say gimmicks, but, uh, ways of, of making the, the position more attractive. But unfortunately, at this point, um, with the, the driver shortage in the St. Louis area, a lot of times when, when school districts are getting new drivers, they're stealing them from another district. So, you know, we don't want to get in that situation either and we definitely don't want them to be, uh, swiping them from us. But anyway, so we, we do have some ideas cooking and, um, right now, I just want to, you know, second the praise to Mike for everything that he's done to be able to transport more students on fewer routes. And even though we, we have had to cut routes and we have people who are still not happy with us because of that, um, I, I firmly believe that he is doing the best he can and his staff and he's got some great drivers, so.
Just really quickly, um, I agree with, um, with Cindy and there are always gonna be competing priorities in a school district. And, uh, there are other departments that have needs. Um, I would think there's a different time and place to have some of these conversations, but, um, kudos to your team for the continued, um, flexibility and creativity that you've engaged in, literally from the start of the school year. I know, don't think, I know there have been changes. And so, um, it's not always communicated, but, uh, it is most definitely appreciated. So, um, you know, that's true of our child nutrition department. We've, we've discussed custodial departments this evening as well. And so, um, as I said, there are definitely competing priorities as a district. Um, and we're doing the best that we can with the resources that we do have, um, available to us at this particular point in time.
I had a question for Mike. Have we ever packaged drivers with like the custodial so that on their, after their route time, they could work in our buildings? And do, do two jobs at once, like put in a full day?
I do talk that up very well. Uh, all the applicants that come in, I talk that up during the application process. Um, I mention it during our kickoff meetings. Uh, we mention it over our, our radios as well to our drivers.
Just showing, it's an option.
A lot of our drivers, well, they kind of come and hit and miss, but a lot of them are in child nutrition. They'll, they'll go to the schools, work the child nutrition, then they'll get on their buses.
They can work those kind of hours things out for them to do both?
It, it does work out very well, yes. I wish we had more that wanted to help.
Yeah.
Do we have any bus drivers that route share? So for instance, someone might do the AM shift and maybe they have a second job or they do the PM shift. I don't know if that's even an option.
We used to do that years ago. Um, it took a select, uh, breed of person that, that wanted to just do that and, and be available for that all the time. Um, but I don't have anyone currently that, um, is interested in doing anything like that. Good question. We used to do that.
Thank you, Mike. I do want to appreciate you and everything you're doing. I know you, you're short-staffed and everything. I also want to point out, the gentleman in the back, the picture, he actually came to our last parade, Eureka. Is it Ben? And he, yeah, he was there with his wife and he, they did a phenomenal job. And this is outside of their work and I really do appreciate that.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item is the proposed agenda for the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting. It's coming up here. Is at Crestview Middle School. And then, uh, final agenda, uh, item here is just the future agenda presentations and events to attend. Um, as mentioned earlier, every Tuesday, there's a different, uh, Prop Three Community Town Hall at a different high school. So check the website for that information and board members, it's on your calendars. And then, um, beginning this Friday, um, they're going to be having some St. Louis School Board PLPC Zooms. So, um, those of you who are new, uh, to the board, that is a really valuable, um, time spent. They, this is the first time they're doing these, um, shorter Zoom meetings. The longer one is coming up in December in person. Those are always really helpful to get together with other school board members. Um, and they do a really nice job. So I don't know what these, um, Friday morning, uh, meetings will be like, but Tammy, let us know. And if anybody else is able to attend, um, we can, um, share that out. All right, if nothing else, then we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.